Please, Southland.
Enough of the background. The question is just towards not to be inside. I've also worked for public education. Do you feel that there is a conflict of interest happening? Union operatives, union members who work for staffers, who work for education at school board?
Yes, absolutely.
I absolutely believe that there's conflicts of interest all around OUSD, including on the school board itself. And to answer another follow-up to a question of what's next? The constituents in Oakland know that we have decisions that we can make. Recalls are not off the table for school board. We've seen San Francisco successfully recall three board members. We know that they're at large, but this is different. We know in Oakland, we are a city of fighting. We are a city of advocacy. I'm not born and raised in Oakland, but Oakland is my home. Wherever I lay my head is where I fight. So I'm gonna keep fighting. And I'm gonna keep stamping up and speaking up. And again, those board members know that we, as parents and constituents, we won't sit down, and the recall conversations have been looming.
The recall conversations have been looming. Please, Southland, this is your host, Senator Scott, going live today. Going live today to talk about this press conference that I just attended. Now, I want to show you pretty much the entire press conference, because I know that a lot of times, the media's not showing you everything that happened, and they're able to pick and choose quotes to fit whatever narrative that they're trying to construct. And so here is why I want to give you the entire interview. There were some things said that I don't think you're gonna see on the news. So I want you to compare the full interview to the news coverage and see if the narrative holds. Because what's really going on in OUSD, what's really going on is that the public sector unions have completely captured the school board. Same thing that's happened with Oakland City Council. The moment, everybody who's elected either is a union operative themselves, like myself. I used to work for SCIU 1021 as the East Bay Director, a prominent position. One may have called me the union boss of Oakland, once upon a time. We have lots of union bosses in elected positions. Zach Unger, former fire chief of the union. In particular, what we're talking about today, Valerie Bachelor, who is an employee for California Federation of Teachers and one of the education unions. How do I know? She used to be my employee. I used to be Valerie Bachelor's boss. And let me tell you, she was just as problematic then as she is now. She was just as racist then as she is now. And she had just as much disregard for the poor community and just as little empathy for Black, in particular, Black students as she does now. So anyway, let me bring back up and play this entire-
Recommendations from the parent and student advisory council, the community advisory committee for special education, and the foster youth advisory committee. All critical players in the LCAP compliance have been inadequately reflected in the district planning. OUSD's failure to satisfy LCAP requirements is irresponsible, and it puts at risk services and support desperately needed for African-American and other students, specifically students of color. These students are already suffering from low outcomes because not only three out of our 10 Black and Brown students can read at grade level, only two out of 10 of them can do math on grade level. Our students deserve better.
What? Only three out of 10 can read at grade level, and only two out of 10 can do math at grade level? And these are already watered-down metrics. They're nowhere near the metrics that we were when I was in school in the 80s and 90s.
Thank you, Ms. Stephaniecia Ekoey Walton. Next, we'll hear from Tanisha Harris, a parent of OUSD students.
Forgive the subtitles if they're off. I just did it real quick, because sometimes it's hard to hear, and sometimes I couldn't even hear them, because I'm hearing impaired. But I did it and fixed them, so if they're a little off, please forgive me.
To discuss the fiscal impact of OUSD's decision to terminate Superintendent Johnson Tremel and appoint an interim superintendent. Good morning. My name's Tanisha Harris. OUSD terminated our superintendent, Dr. Kyla Johnson Tremel. Now obligates taxpayers to pay full-time salaries and benefits for two superintendents. Dr. Johnson Tremel will be paid her full salary through January 15th, plus ever paid thereafter. Intern superintendent, Dr. Denise Satter-Sattler, will be paid an annual salary of over $350,000, plus benefits. It is unclear how OUSD will meet these competing dual obligations. And emit a looming $95 million budget deficit. And at a time when OUSD still... At a time where OUSD still does not have a final budget. This decision reflects an unacceptable misalignment of priorities, all to the detriment of OUSD students.
Yes!
Thank you, Tanisha Harris. Let's now hear from Vivica Ekoey Walton, whose one child is in an Oakland Unified School District, to talk about how OUSD's lack of transparency and accountability negatively impacting our children.
Hello, good morning. My name is Vivica Ekoey Walton. I'm a family organizer and civic engagement lead for Families in Action for Quality Education in Oakland. OUSD has engaged in a pattern of making decisions in closed sessions, including budget decisions that harm our children without fair opportunity for the public input and without reporting some of those decisions as required by the Brown Act. Issues have also been raised about potential conflicts of interest on the part of some bulk board members. OUSD has ignored formal requests of collaborations made by the NAACP and other community organizations like Families in Action. OUSD has not even publicly disclosed how the board and the interim superintendent will engage with various stakeholders and justify financial decisions that have been made. Nor have parents been reassured that the board majority still feels that unfair labor practice strikes are illegal. The public has lost complete trust in the OUSD board because it does not appear to prioritize the best interests of our students in Oakland.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Vivica Ekoey Walton. We will now hear from Tatiana Navoa, a recent student who will talk about her challenges in trying to access a quality education.
Only three out of 10 students in OUSD read at grade level, and only two out of 10 OUSD students do math at grade level. Keep in mind, these are watered-down grade levels from where they were, maybe at the height of education for working families and particularly the African-American community in the late 90s. We have watered down our standards, and we still can't even meet these watered-down standards. Yet, the school board budgets have gotten bigger, and the power of the unions has gotten greater. So the more power the public sector labor unions seem to get, the worse the actual product on the other end of public services. This is a pattern that we're seeing, not just in education, but across all elected official city council and upper trial.
Good morning. My name is Tatiana Navoa, and I'm a recent Oakland graduate and also a youth leader with me. And I will be attending Cal Berkeley in the fall. I have challenges that OUSD students face every day. Some challenges are embedded, and some are unnecessarily and unfairly imposed. These resources, children need to succeed, and especially children of color. It should not be non-negotiable. A school board with proper governance should be able to assist us in achieving the positive outcomes all students deserve. That's right.
Thank you, Tatiana Navoa. Our final speakers are the husband and wife team of Diana Cisneros Foster and Corwin Foster, who have four children in OUSD schools. They will speak to what we need from OUSD now.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Diana Cisneros Foster.
So I'm gonna skip it, only because I don't have a translator there, and because her husband actually says the same thing again. But I'm gonna put the link in the description box when I'm done. So those of you who are Spanish-speaking, although you wouldn't be watching Gotham, Oakland, if you were only Spanish-speaking unless you translated it. But either way, let me skip this real quick, just to get to the brother.
... Organicen, toten un oficial. El super, es interesado y trabaja resultados de oportunidad. La NAACP-
Community so desperately needs the NAACP. That our children and-
Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Corwin Foster, and as my wife just said, is Spanish. To achieve a new era of board governance that our children and communities so desperately need, the NAACP Oakland branch, Families in Action for Quality Education, and Latino Education Network make these five demands of the OUSD. Number one, host public forums to receive community input and leadership and budget priorities. Demand number two, by June 30th, adopt a fiscally responsible budget in line with the chief financial officer's recommendations to avoid receivership. Demand number three, publicly disclose how the board and interim superintendent will engage with various stakeholders and justify financial decisions. Demand number four, cease decision-making driven by union alignment Sorry. And divisiveness and work as a unit for student outcomes. Demand number five, timely respond to formal requests for collaboration sent by the NAACP and other community leaders.
We are at a crisis point in Oakland's education system. Please listen to these statistics very closely. Oakland Unified School District students are 14 points behind students in California as a whole in state reading scores, and 10 points behind in math. Those gaps are equally wide for our African-American and Latino/Latina students. Listen, who are 68% of the students' population. Only 22% score on grade level for reading.
Unacceptable.
And 13, and only 13% for math. We must act now.
Okay, hold on. The progressives have had control of the school board for some time now, and this is the outcome? We were doing better. We were doing better when these school boards were run by people who we claim were not there for our community. And I'm not saying that those claims were unfounded, but this can't be better than where we were at before. So who is making progress here besides the pocketbooks and the amount of control that these public sector labor unions have? Keep in mind that we can draw direct connections from every one of these unions to foreign entities who are pouring money into US politics, seemingly to destabilize us. What other excuse can you have for how students go backwards in the reading? Right now, students in Oakland, California are reading worse than before Brown versus Board of Education Supreme Court decision. I need you to let that sink in. Right after sharecropping, there was more intention and better reading metrics amongst African-American students than we have today in 2025, mainly due to these progressives who are watering down math. They have, what is that, delaning crap, getting rid of algebra. We all did algebra when I was in middle school. I went to public sector, public system, um, public sector, I'm sorry. Public schools in Cleveland, Ohio during the crack epidemic. And most of my fellow students were from single-parent households. They had all of the same socioeconomic issues today, if not greater. But yet, we still passed. We had much better metrics than we do today in OUSD. What's really happening? Let me get back to this interview.
Now, now, now.
I want to thank the press and the community for attending our press conference this morning. I will now open the floor for questions.
My question is, first of all, thank you to the parents.
That's my voice, if you can't tell already. I know you can tell my voice easy, because I have a speech impediment. But I want you to keep in mind, Oakland side was there. They did not ask a single question. Matter of fact, I think I asked the only two questions that, besides a very basic one, I asked the only two questions there. So there was no curiosity, it seemed. Like, we wanted to know what was really going on here.
... coming out. I know that many parents are working and cannot come to many of the events. What can we do to make these school board meetings more accessible to parents who actually share these same issues that you have, so that the messages can get out more, uh, so people can understand what's going on here? Like myself, we don't have children.
First is accessibility. Thank you. Thank you for your question. First, I will say is accessibility. We need to make sure that these board meetings are in all languages that exist in the city of Oakland. And we need to make sure that they're streamed and that they're notifying the community in a timely manner. We can't call emergency meetings at 7:00 PM for the 9:00 PM the next day and expect parents to be there, right? Even the three days in advance is even a stretch. We need to be posting agendas, so parents know what it's talking about. But really, it's each board member has a constituency that they are obligated to. They need to be making sure they're communicating effectively and figuring out what that effective communication looks like. That's the real work for the school board members. Tanisha, you have something you want to say?
Yes. As a parent, and as a native of Oakland who went through the OUSD system, I'm calling all parents in Oakland, especially my Black parents and my Brown parents. I know we got work. I know we gotta work. I know we gotta work two, three jobs. But if we don't start putting our babies first, we wonder why our children aren't listening. We're wondering why they're acting up in school. We're wondering why they don't want to go to school. I don't care if you can't make it in person while you're cooking dinner. Log into it. Log in and listen. You know, we have to be accountable, and you will see why our babies are acting the way they're acting. But it's gonna take the adults to show up and show out for them. Every two weeks? We got every two weeks, Wednesday. Make it, hey, get some other parents. Hey, y'all come over for dinner. We have to do better by our youth, and we have to show out, because there are people here who are trying to dismantle education. And if we don't do it now-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Come on, we don't have 80 years.
She just said, "There are people here who are trying to dismantle education." Who are those people?
It's gonna take the adults to show up and show out for them. Every two weeks? We got every two weeks, Wednesday. Make it, hey, get some other parents. Hey, y'all come over for dinner. We have to do better by our youth, and we have to show out, because there are people here who are trying to dismantle education. And if we don't do it now, come on, we don't have 80 years.
There are people here trying to dismantle education. Now, who in their right mind would be trying to dismantle education? Remember what I said earlier, that we have foreign entities who are enemies of our country? Regardless of what you feel about America's original sin, regardless of what you feel about Iran-Contra, regardless of what you feel about wars around the world, if you live in this country, then you don't want to be attacked by our enemies, where you can't feed your family. So in theory, it all sounds great, until they're bombing you, until your children can't read, and then they grow up not being able to feed themselves, because they have no education and at the bottom of the new caste system that we're developing. Especially as we've seen education just take a split from COVID. The in-person students in private school versus public school kids who were on those computers, not learning, for two years were fundamentally sacked back. And it doesn't seem to be any sense of urgency from our school board, who is captured by public sector labor unions. Why do the public sector teachers' union not care about education metrics? What is more important to them? Dismantling the Intifada or whatever the heck these people are talking about? Then go do that. Don't be a teacher. You're supposed to- My mother is an educator. My woman, 20-year charity, teaches at Casa Mont High School for autistic and disabled kids, is a teacher. Education is fundamentally important to my family's upbringing. And to see the legacy of my mother and your mother and all of these people in our community who have been fighting for education this entire time, only to have people attack it is absolutely disgraceful. We need to name names. We're gonna get to that in a minute. The good part's coming up.
We don't have four generations. If we don't act now and have a purpose and make sure that we hold each other accountable, our children won't have an education. And what we're going through in this world now, we're gonna see it just really be crazy. So parents, people in the community, even if you don't have children, show up. Show up.
Any other questions?
What is next?
Where's Oakland side?
What you guys try to do to resolve this problem?
So what is next is tomorrow evening at 4:00 PM is the board meeting, where they will be voting on this superintendent contract. Where they will be trying to vote on a budget that will be accepted. So this is a call to action for all the community. You know, we all need to come up and show out and make sure that the board is held accountable, and they understand. And we need to make sure that the board also doesn't pull any strings on the day of and change public comments, so parents are rating three and four hours to speak and to get their voice heard. We need to make sure public comment stays at the beginning of the meeting, where the community can give their input. And we need everyone to show up. At La Esqualita Elementary School at 4:00 PM, and at 6:00 PM, they come back out for general session. So we need the community to mobilize, and we need to fight, because what is happening at the school district level is comparable to what's happening at the national level. And it's not right. We're being, parents are being pushed aside. Our decisions are not being taken serious. We're not even considered to even know the information. That sounds just like the administration that's sitting in the White House, and it's not fair to us in Oakland.
That's a little other question.
Yes, go ahead.
My partner is a teacher at Casa Mont High School for professional education.
Okay.
And in addition to, she's a union representative. She's not doing that anymore. Enough of the background. The question is just towards not to be inside. I've also worked for public education. Do you feel that there is a conflict of interest happening?
I said a conflict of interest. My apologies. I did not troubleshoot the subtitles, and my speech impediment is sometimes hard for a computer to decipher, and I wasn't by the microphone either. But I asked as to a conflict of interest with union operatives and the school board.
Union operatives, union members who work for staffers, who work for education at school board?
I absolutely believe that there's conflicts of interest all around OUSD, including on the school board itself. And to answer another follow-up to a question of what's next, the constituents in Oakland know that we have decisions that we can make. Recalls are not off the table for school board. We've seen San Francisco successfully recall three board members. We know that they're at large, but this is different. We know in Oakland, we are a city of fighting. We are a city of advocacy. I'm not born and raised in Oakland, but Oakland is my home. Wherever I lay my head is where I fight. So I'm gonna keep fighting. And I'm gonna keep stamping up and speaking up. And again, those board members know that we, as parents and constituents, we won't sit down, and the recall conversations have been looming.
Let's go! Let's go! The recall conversations have been looming. You hear that, Valerie Bachelor? I hope you heard that, Valerie, because they're talking about you. Now, Valerie Bachelor used to work for me when I was her boss in 2020, when I went back to work for a public sector labor union, thinking I was gonna end my sabbatical and get back into labor. I ended up leaving that job and running for city council instead. But she worked for me. I was her boss for a while. And let me tell you, that lady is a racist. She was extremely racist toward me. She had contempt for Black men. And more importantly, my opinions aside, because that's just my opinion, the facts are, now that she's ignoring parents, parents feel ignored, to the point where they're actually calling for recalls of school board members. So I want to share a little bit more. Mike Hutchison, longtime school, not longtime, school board member, has been the long, sole-person fighting nest. And I want to go to his Facebook page, because he has a few videos I'm gonna play that give some more. I want you to hear from a school board member what's going on, and then we'll have a little discussion before I check out of here and get on with my day.
Thank you. You know, again, since I'm not gonna blow any smoke tonight, everyone should clearly understand in the community that, as a collective, this school board has no idea about the budget, or what's happening, or what's going on with our finances. And again, we can see that by the fact that not only is the superintendent not here, there's not even a representative here from the superintendent, which should really send off red flags. But I think it's important that we remember what's happened over the last year. And so, last year in June, in June of '24, the board approved our update to our fiscal sustainability plan, which laid out that as a school board, we would be making recommendations this month that we'd be voting on in terms of restructuring the district and re-envisioning the footprint. The restructuring work is supposed to, was supposed to be led by Superintendent Johnson Tremel. But now we can see, we're in June, and we're not having those votes that we committed to, because this board has rejected three years' worth of work that we put in. So now our budget is looking very different, because when we went into budget development in the fall of '24, it was based on the commitments we had made in our fiscal sustainability update. And then we took five months to work on Attachment C, our budget adjustment package. Finally passed it at the beginning of March. And then a month later, the board introduced alternative budget adjustments that set off two months of chaos that then they had to repeal. And so now, our budget does not look how it should have looked, because this board has backed away from the work and the progress that we had been making over the last three years. To hear our CBO say, "You could be proactive if you want to, but it's up to you," is very disheartening, because that's an admission that this board has thrown out the work that we had done, which put us in the position to be proactive, which put us in the position to negotiate almost $100 million in raises with our labor partners over the last three years. But not only does this budget not look the same now, not only are we gonna be really pressed to have enough money, there's not many dollars identified for any potential negotiations we might need to have with our labor partners. And then we've had no engagement over this budget. It's shocking. Not only is there no community here, there's not even our labor partners here. Who's here to speak up and to speak on our budget? Who's here to make sure that things are done the right way? And as a school board, we have two responsibilities: hire a superintendent and fiduciary responsibility. What two things have this board failed on the most? Superintendent and fiduciary responsibility.
That's part one. I'm gonna play part two, and then I'm gonna say some closing remarks.
See that by the fact that not only is the-
Director Hutchinson.
Wow. It would have been great if we actually asked an interim superintendent candidate a question about the budget and what they knew. Unfortunately, we can't just look forward without there being a full understanding and hopefully some accountability of what's happened over the last few months. I always appreciate your professional and thoughtful words, Ms. Grand Dawson. I've also learned, and hopefully many in the community have learned, how to accurately read between the lines. The fact that you're now making statements as like projecting towards the future about making decisions and what we need to do after three years of work is wild. To hear school board directors blame, saying "them, them, them, that board", when they were a member of that board, is pretty wild. Because I seem to remember you had just as many votes on these things as I have in my time on the board. Yes, I did. But what I, but what I, but what I didn't pass is alternative budget adjustments. What I didn't pass is forcing our superintendent out. What I didn't not do is throw out the work on the three Rs and ignore the fiscal sustainability plan. So if we want to talk about what we've done and what we haven't done, I'm here for that conversation, and I'll put my record up against yours any day of the week. And so we are facing a real crisis now. And the fact that we are now two weeks away from when we have to have a statutory requirement to approve our budget, and nobody even knows what's in the budget? Nobody has looked at it? None of our stakeholders or partners are here to weigh in on the budget? None of our stakeholders or partners are here to weigh in on the budget? And then we have school board directors asking philosophical questions about how we might do things in the future?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop it right there. Everything the progressives do is meant to fail deliberately. They're not here to succeed. If they were, they would be more honest, to be more honest about their shortcomings, to be more open to corrective or constructive criticism. But what we see is a deliberate attempt to make sure that the average poor person does not learn. I don't know what's going on here. I know that the people are waking up and the more we wake up and the more we actually ask them accountability and a good faith conversation, the more totalitarian these so-called progressives are getting. And then when you follow the money, it goes right back to foreign adversaries, mainly China, through the Chinese Progressive Association. Now, I'm not trying to lose you here, but I just want you to ask yourself, who's funding all of this? How come there have never been any audits for these public sector labor unions' money that they claim comes from their members? It's not adding up. Now, remember, I've worked for public sector labor unions. I went to Cornell University, School of Industrial Labor Relations. I have worked as a director for the Screen Actors Guild. I have worked as a director for SCIU Local 99, which is education in Los Angeles. I've worked for a director of California Faculty Association. I've worked as the East Bay director for SCIU Local 1021. I helped organize the Transportation Security Administration. I helped organize in-home supportive service workers back in 1999 through 2000 when they won collective bargaining rights. I have led first campaigns for over thirty thousand workers in the US labor movement. So I give you those bona fides so you know I know what I'm talking about when it comes to labor. When did we lose our way? When it stopped being about the workers and the families and more about whatever this hidden agenda they have? And how come unions keep putting in theater kids, people with zero municipal finance acumen, who don't understand budgets, who don't know how bonds work? This is intentional. This is how you lose the continuity of government and forget how things are run and your cities are destroyed. I need for everyone to come to this public sector, uh, the school board meeting tomorrow at Escolita, whatever, high school or middle school at 4:00 PM. I can't put it on the screen because this is live, so there's no post-production. But I really need you guys to show up, look online and find out where this meeting is. Call in. I don't have children. I'm gonna make an effort to get down there and make my voice heard because regardless if I have children or not, these children who we're failing eventually will end up either harming us or affecting our lives because we're gonna depend on them as we get old. As we become elders, we're gonna be dependent on these children who will then be adults to help us. And just as we have failed them and we're failing them, they're going to fail us. And so this is out of my own self-interest to make sure that I can age with dignity and I don't have to fend myself off from Pharaoh children and Mad Max and, you know, Clockwork Orange-type behavior. Scary stuff, man. Um, we need to do something about this public sector labor unions' capture of our government. There needs to be a conversation and there needs to be audits. There needs to be audits of every public sector labor union's political action committee to make sure that the money is indeed coming from their members. There needs to be audits of every single nonprofit that has any connection with any elected official, especially those run by family members. And there needs to be some hard conversations had about what does it mean to be progressive? And how can you call yourself progressive when not only did you not make progress, you do active harm? When not only do you not make progress, you're doing active harm to the community. Somebody needs to make this make sense to me. With that being said, peace, y'all. This is host Gotham Oakland. I don't go live that much, but when I do, check me out. Please share this. And tomorrow, I'll be back with part three of the Duffy dossier. Part three, Harold Duffy, uh, city administrator for the city of Oakland is an absolute corrupt individual. He's been tied in with this criminal behind me and a lot more. Come here tomorrow and find out only on Gotham Oakland. I love you guys. Take care of yourself. Take care of these babies and these elders, y'all. Peace.